Come to order, please. Row call, press your present button, please, and confirm. Record the row. Thank you. There we go. I think I got a mic now. Announcement staff?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was trying to get my roll straightened out. We also have the wrong names lit up, too. I think the school board met before us tonight, and that might factor into that. Having said that, we have a number of announcements. First of all, item seventeen has been withdrawn. You will note there are new reports in front of you regarding items seven and eighteen, and in the case of eighteen, it also involves a plat. The only problems with the plat were they didn't have their addresses on there, and I think the owner's signature and how they do, so that'll be there. When we get to consent, we are going to ask that, the staff is going to ask items twelve, thirteen, and fourteen be pulled for separate consideration. And finally, by the first part of next week, you all will be receiving a copy of the Grassland Small Area Plan. Our intent is unless there is a, unless there are a strong set of reasons to the contrary to be back before this body next month for its adoption, but we figured we would let y'all clear this meeting and then send you something for your reading enjoyment for the next couple of weeks. Aside from that, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Consideration- It's the minutes of January nine fourteen. Any corrections? Most maiden seconded. Prepare to vote. You're still not here, Holly. I will make the records clear. Record the vote. I've pressed it, and so has my deputy here.
There.
We did it. Takes two to vote tonight. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Old business staff?
We have, we have no items at old business.
Consideration of the consent agenda. For those of you on the commission, the staff has requested twelve, thirteen, and fourteen be pulled for separate consideration. Are there any others? If not, we'll take it as a whole. Thank you. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item three, Bell Chase, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, sixty-six thousand dollars. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item four, Brenns Valley, Section Three, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, twenty thousand dollars. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item five, Ivan Creek, Performance Bond for Landscaping, twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the amount of sixteen thousand and sixty-five dollars and extend for a period of six months. Item six, Kings Chapel, Section Three A, Maintenance Bond for Water, eighty-five hundred dollars. Recommendation, defer to the April fourteen meeting. Item seven, Kings Chapel, Section Three A, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, sixty-five thousand dollars. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and extend for a period of two years. Item eight, Kings Chapel, Section Three A, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars. Recommendation, convert to maintenance in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand dollars and extend for a period of one year. Item nine, Silverstream Farm, Section Four A, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, ten thousand dollars. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of six months. Item ten, Silverstream Farm, Section Six A, Maintenance Bond for Sewer, fifteen thousand dollars. Recommendation, extend in current amount for a period of one year. Item eleven, Silverstream Farm, Section Eight, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, forty thousand dollars. Recommendation, release the bond. Dropping down now to item eighteen. Final plat review for Chardonnay, Section Six, containing twenty-six lots on thirty-eight point nine-three acres located off Clovercroft Road in the fourth voting district. Staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. One, the posting of performance bond in the amount of five hundred fifty thousand dollars for roads drainage and erosion control. Two, the posting of a maintenance bond in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for water improvements as specified by Mill Crofton Utility District. Three, the posting of performance bond in the amount of sixty-five thousand two hundred for wastewater collection system. Four, the posting of performance bond in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for landscaping. Five, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat. And item nineteen. Final plat review for Kings Chapel, Section Four B, containing twenty-seven lots on seventeen point four-three acres located off Murphy's Borough Road in the fifth district. Staff recommends approval of this final plat with the same stipulations as the November twenty thirteen approval, with the exception that performance bond for roads drainage and erosion control be reduced to the amount of two hundred ten thousand dollars. This is a reduced performance amount with the original amount being three hundred ten thousand dollars, based on work completed since the original amount was established by this body.
Question, don't- Sent. Most maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Well, I'm glad you came. Consent agenda items that were pulled were agenda item twelve, staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read the August action, followed by the recommendation, if I may. At the August two thirteen, two thousand thirteen meeting, the body, this body granted approval to extend this bond in the current amount for a period of six months. Staff met with a representative of the development to discuss the placement of the asphalt surface and make binder repairs. Representative indicated that he plans to have repairs made and the asphalt surface placed as soon as possible. Staff also indicated this bond is at the end of the bond period, and as-built plans would also need to be submitted. The recommendation, staff bids decided, noted no additional work has been performed. However, developers in the process of trying to secure final bids to complete the project. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of six months. The buildout for this section is at fifty-four percent. Mr. Chairman, staff has asked that a representative for the developer or applicant attend this meeting tonight to give this body an update on the schedule. As, as you can see, from, from August until this month, we, we have been told that some things are happening, but we have not received any type of hard schedule, and so we wanted to pull these items from consent and have the applicant speak with this body to see if we could get a good schedule. Yes, Mr. Walter Davidson is here to represent the applicant. He's the applicant's engineer.
My name's Walter Davidson. I'm the engineer that's been retained by the applicant to help oversee finishing the project. As of this afternoon, they have a signed contract with a grading and utility contractor to finish up the drainage. I will be doing the as-built plans as required. They have also entered into a contract with a geotechnical engineering firm to do a complete evaluation of the existing paving and curbs to recommend what needs to be done to repair them prior to final topping. And it's a hope that we can get that put out to bid and get final paving done as soon as the weather permits this spring.
Do we have to go out six months, Mr. Davidson, to make that happen again?
I think three months would probably be sufficient.
I appreciate your honesty. Anything else?
Uh, no.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I'm sorry, any questions of the applicant's representative? We'll take these one at a time, or are they, they all different, aren't they?
They're, they're all, all different, different sections of the development, yes.
On agenda item twelve, I think we ought to go with Walter's recommendation of three months, unless you have a problem with that. Go ahead. Most maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Would you like to amend Mr. Walton's motion to that effect?
Yes, sir.
All right. Back in a month, a report. Anything else? I hear an amendment to the motion. Voice vote?
Is there a second on the amendment?
I'm sorry, do we have a second? I did not hear it. Oh, okay. A second to Commissioner Crowhahn's motion to report progress at one, at the next meeting. Is that, is that his motion?
If I may, and I'm not a road expert, but I know they can't pay probably for, end up until late March, so I don't know, I don't know that, personally, I don't know that he needs to come back in that time. Maybe he could submit a report.
Well, there's a lot of geotechnical engineering, as building, and et cetera that needs to be done.
Before they pay?
Yes. Prior to that, I think that's why we need to make sure it's going on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We have a motion and a second. Who was the second, please? Holly. Holly, you were second on amendment to the motion? All right. We have amendment, voice vote. All in favor of the amended motion by Commissioner Crowhahn, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now to the original motion. Commissioner Walton, we'll, we'll record the vote with our machine. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen, Stockit Creek, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff?
Staff bids decided, noted no additional work has been performed. However, the developers in the process of trying to secure final bids to complete the project. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of six months. The buildout for this section is at twenty-six percent. Mr. Chairman, this is a completely different bond, Section Two.
Is there any reason that couldn't be three?
I'm sorry?
Is there any reason that bond extension period could not be three?
No, sir.
Okay. I thought you were indicating there was something different about that.
No, no, sir. I just-
I'm sorry. Thank you. Questions of the applicant or William? Comments? Motion? On six months? Most maiden seconded? Most maiden seconded. Any further discussion? I hear an un. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item fourteen, Stockit Creek, Section Three, Maintenance Bonds, Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Staff?
Staff has visited the site and noted no additional work has been performed. However, the developers in the process of trying to secure the final bids to complete the project. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of six months. The buildout for this section is at forty-four percent.
Questions? Comments? Motion? Most maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Well, Susan, try it again. I think you got it. Record the vote. The motion carries. Thank you. All right. Back up to the, back up in the agenda. Agenda item fifteen. Amendment to the two thousand thirteen official zoning maps regarding the following tax map parcels and zoning district. Rezone from Rural Preservation RP one to Rural Preservation RP five. Tax map fifty-one, parcels twelve point oh, twelve point oh-two, twelve point oh-three, twelve point oh-five, twelve point oh-six, twelve point oh-seven, twelve point oh-eight, twelve point oh-nine, twelve point ten, twelve point eleven, twelve point twelve, twelve point thirteen, twelve point fourteen, twelve point sixteen, twelve point seventeen, twelve point eighteen, twelve point nineteen, twelve point twenty, and twelve point twenty-one. Staff?
At the January meeting, this body considered a request to rezone thirteen of nineteen lots in the Two Rivers subdivision from their present zoning of Rural Preservation one to Rural Preservation five. Due to concerns about rezoning only a portion of a platted residential subdivision, this body deferred action on that request in order to give the remaining lot owners an opportunity to join the request. The application now consists of all nineteen properties in the subdivision. A petition making this request has been received from the owners of each of these nineteen parcels. The chief distinction between the existing zoning district and the proposed zoning district relates to the density of residential development allowed, which is as follows. Rural Preservation one is one dwelling unit per acre, and Rural Preservation five is one dwelling unit per five acres. Essentially, these property owners have requested a downzoning of their properties in that the requested zoning district is more restrictive than the existing zoning district from the standpoint of allowable residential density. The lots in this subdivision are all greater than five acres in size. Section four point oh-five of the zoning ordinance provides some guidance in such matters by outlining a number of factors that should be considered when evaluating a request for a map amendment. Staff believes that a number of these factors may be viewed as supporting this request. One of the key factors that should be considered is the extent to which a proposed map amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive land use plan. Staff does not believe the existing zoning in this area is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, an argument can also be made that the requested zoning is not inconsistent with the overall goals and policies of the plan. Based on these findings, coupled with the fact that, that the property owners are voluntarily requesting that a more restrictive zoning district be applied to the properties, staff recommends that the requested map amendment be approved and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the county commission for its consideration.
Thank you, sir. Those of you in the audience, this is a public hearing. Our procedures are you be invited to come to the podium to give us your comments. If you would at that time, give us your name and address. We would appreciate it. Public hearing is open for comment at this time.
Thank you very much. Name is Kurt Barton. Address is four two one nine Two Rivers Lane. So I'm one of the residents in Two Rivers subdivision, also a member of the board on the Homeowners Association. As it was mentioned, one hundred percent of our residents have applied for this petition and consistently agree that we would like to petition and ask for downzoning to RP five. We are very proud of our subdivision. It is a, it is a rural lifestyle-type subdivision, and we all joined that subdivision, as mentioned earlier, knowing that we have five acre or larger lots. And so what we're requesting is, is that we would like the zoning for our area to be consistent with what our desire is, is for our area, our subdivision, and quite frankly, the greater area of that, of the, of the Del Rio Pike and Old Hillsborough area to be a rural preservation-type area. And so we want to go ahead and make sure and ask for, and our request is, is that the zoning for our subdivision is consistent with the development as it was put together originally and consistent with what the homeowners are looking for and the reason they bought and built a home in the area to maintain and continually have five acre minimum. Thank you.
Good evening. Commissioner Castner for the ninth district, and Mary Brockman asked me to come here and on behalf of her and on behalf of myself would like to express our appreciation for staff's work on this and their in support of this. We think the underlying zoning is, is important. There is a, a PUD or homeowner declaration of covenants that does describe the lots, excuse me, the lots that are currently platted, but, but of course, two-thirds of those homeowners could at a future date change. And so the existing homeowners would like to have the, the protection of the underlying zoning changed to RP five. Commissioner Brockman and I are certainly in support of that and appreciate very much staff's help in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Last call? We'll close the public hearing at this time. Thank you. Comments? Questions? Don?
Mr. Chairman, there may be a revision, and I don't have, you, you read off twelve point oh-eight, and I don't have it on my list here. Is that one that's added to this?
I said twelve point oh-eight?
Yes, sir.
My mistake. My bad. It is not on mine either, Don. Thank you.
But then there's nineteen parcels?
Staff?
There are nineteen parcels.
Does the math add?
Mr. Chairman, on the agenda, it does call for twelve point eight.
But in the resolution, it's not there.
Uh, you're right. I'm reading from the agenda and not the, not the details. See, it is on mine. Does that make nineteen with eight in there?
Yes.
Then eight is part of it. Staff, which one's correct? The agenda?
Agenda's correct.
Is correct?
What you read in the record is correct.
Thank you. There is an eight, Don.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was reading from two different documents. Same item. Thank you for the correction. Any other comments? Most maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Pratt?
We're on a, on the understanding that this is just this subdivision, that the people who own land around this subdivision still have the right to subdivide their property as zoned.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Well, is it gonna record? Good grief. I'm not gonna assume that motion carried. Can we record the vote? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian. Slam it, Brian. All right. If it's not gonna do it, I'm gonna go back to a voice vote so we can move along. All in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Boy, that was a much better way to do it. Uh, agenda item sixteen. Amendment to Section thirteen point oh-three of the two thousand thirteen Williams County zoning ordinance regarding steep topography and slippage soil protection. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Section thirteen oh-three of the zoning ordinance relates to the protection of areas of steep topography and slippage soils. In general, this section prohibits land disturbance in areas of very steep slopes in excess of twenty-five percent, and also on areas of slippage soil on slopes exceeding fifteen percent.
There's currently an exclusion from this prohibition for passive recreational uses, minor utilities, and driveways on very steep slopes. However, in administering the zoning ordinance, staff discovered that this same exclusion does not currently exist for these uses on areas of slippage soils on slopes exceeding fifteen percent. Staff believes that such an exclusion is appropriate, subject to proper geotechnical reports, design, and oversight. As such, the attached amendment clarifies that land disturbing activities in areas of slippage soils on slopes in excess of fifteen percent may occur for passive recreational uses, minor utilities, and driveways, subject to proper reports, design, and supervision by a geotechnical engineer. Staff recommends approval of this amendment and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the county commission for adoption.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Pete? Say again?
What is a minor utility?
I think a minor utility would be like an individual service line for-
Okay. That's just what I want to know, but what I thought it would be, but I just want to hear what you say.
Mike, is it, I assume the red is the change to this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Ooh, public hearing. I'm sure everybody wanna storm up here on this one. We'll all miss for a public hearing discussion at this time. If you have a comment, you come to the podium and give us your name and address, please. Come on, guys, ladies. None? We close the public hearing at this time. Thank you. Any other discussion? Either one, you're good, Tommy. Motion by Mr. Mosley, second by Mr. Tommy. Any other discussion? I hear an un. Prepare to vote. Uh, let's see if it'll work this time. We'll go back to voice. It doesn't. Well, licking the batteries does it every time. Are you playing? Motion carries. Thank you. We're moving. Agenda sixteen. Where am I? Twenty. Agenda seventeen is withdrawn. Eighteen, nineteen, we're on consent. Agenda item twenty on final plats. Final plat review for the Grove, Section one revised, containing two lots on four hundred and fifty-six acres located off Arnold Road in the second voting district. Staff?
A revised final plat for this section of the development was approved at the November meeting. However, because the plat was not recorded within the timeframe specified by Section three point two four I of the subdivision regulations, that approval has expired. The applicant is now requesting approval of another revised final plat with a very minor change to the eastern boundary of this section where it abuts a future phase of the development. Staff considers this change to be very minor in nature and recommends approval of this revised final plat with a stipulation that the applicants must submit two copies of the, the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Motion? Most maiden, three seconds. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Let's try it again. Vote now. Well, we got everybody in then. Oh. There it goes. Record it before it goes out. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item twenty-one, and final, other business, establishment of a landscaping bond for Leapers Creek Distillery located at thirty-three eighty-one South Hall Road in the ninth voting district. Staff?
On January twenty-third, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved a special use permitting the operation of, of a craft distillery on the subject property, and a site plan for this use has been reviewed by staff. However, due to the cost of installing the required landscaping and pursuant to Section sixteen point oh-seven of the zoning ordinance, the landscaping bond must be established by the planning commission prior to final site plan approval by staff. Staff recommends the establishment of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of sixty-six thousand one hundred dollars.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Did I hear a motion down there? The quiet, quiet motion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. See what we get this time. We're closing in. All right. I'll do it again. I love technology. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Any other items for discussion? Motion to adjourn. We are out of here. Thank you.